All right, Chair Olson, go ahead and start whenever you're ready.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular virtual meeting of the City Planning Commission Committee of the Whole. Today is Thursday, September 23rd, 2021. My name's Alyssa Olson, and I am the Vice President of the Planning Commission. This meeting includes the remote participation of board members and staff as authorized under Minnesota Statute, Section 13D dot zero two one due to the declared local public health emergency. The city will be recording and posting this meeting to the city's website and YouTube channel as a means of increasing public access and transparency. This meeting is public and subject to the Minnesota Open Meeting Law. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll to verify the quorum?
Commissioner Baxley.
Aye.
Commissioner Caprini. Commissioner Ismiley is absent tonight. Commissioner Ford.
Aye, here.
Marwa.
Here.
Commissioner McGuire is absent. Meyer.
Here.
Schrader. Sweezy. Commissioner Caprini. Marwa.
Here.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I did get you. Commissioner Schrader. And Sweezy. Commissioner Olson.
Here.
There are five members present.
All right, we have a quorum. With that, we will proceed to the agenda, a copy of which was posted for public access to the city's Legislative Information Management System, which is available at limbs dot Minneapolis MN dot gov. Commissioners, kind of a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion, Marwa.
Do we have a second?
Ford, a second motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baxley.
Aye.
Caprini. Ismiley is absent. Ford.
Aye.
Marwa.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schrader. Sweezy. Chair Olson.
Aye.
There are five ayes.
All right, that motion passes and the agenda is adopted. Next is acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 19th, 2021. Can I have a motion to accept those minutes? Commissioner Ford.
I move, we accept the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, that was Commissioner Baxley.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Commissioner Baxley.
Aye.
Caprini. Ford.
Aye.
Marwa.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schrader. Sweezy. Chair Olson.
Aye.
There are five ayes.
All right, that motion passes. Up next is the consent agenda. Tonight, we have six items on the consent agenda, and five of those items are various land transfers for the Upper Harbor Terminal. And staff is, so we're gonna, we're gonna hear the presentation of all five of those together. And staff is Jim Vohl.
Hello, I'm, I'm Jim Vohl. I'm a planner in the Community Planning, Long Range Planning Division of CPED. I'm also joined by Hillary Holmes, who is a, in the Business Development Division of CPED and is one of the project managers of the Upper Harbor Terminal Project. She can help with any questions. And then, although not presenting, just listening in, Hillary DeVorek is here, who will, as you know, be taking this project through the Planning Commission for the land use approvals. But the four items that we have are for, I'm going to share my screen here. Can everybody see the screen then? So, for parcel one B, parcel two, which is this long parcel here, parcel five, and parcel six A, and then there's the, item number eight is for an easement. And some of the terminology today is a little bit different here than you normally see, because some of these items are land conveyances. And that would be for parcel one B, parcel five, and parcel six A. The city's not selling those, they will be 99-year leases. So people will say, well, why is this on here for a land sale then? Well, because state statute says that if the city does a long-term lease, the Planning Commission has to do a review, just like it would do for a land sale. So the term is conveyance. You're reviewing it for conformance with the comp plan like you would a land sale, but just for anybody who's wondering, like, hey, I thought this was gonna be a 99-year lease, it will be a 99-year lease. Parcel two is a land sale review for conformance with the comp plan, because we are going to sell that to the Park and Rec Board eventually. And then the last one, which as you know, there's an XL power line, which will be relocated to where this red, pinkish reddish dot is. We have to provide an easement for that overhead power line to be moved there, and that goes over parcels two, three, four, and five. So that is a conveyance of an easement. And so I can go into any, I suppose I should just show the development plan really quick. And one B would be housing with retail on the first floor, same thing with, well, two would be the parkland. Five would be production mixed-use type uses. And six A would be, again, housing with ground floor retail. And it's mixed, both of the housings are mixed income, affordable housing is the goal. And so all of those uses would be in conformance with the land use designations in Minneapolis 2040. Now, you're not approving those projects, they're still going to come through as they come through for site plan review and all the other things. And then the plating of the site will be coming through in the next month or so. So you're not reviewing or approving any of that, you're just saying that if the city were to convey this land, and the city council will make the decision whether to do that or not, as whether it's in conformance with Minneapolis 2040. And so our recommendation is that you approve these as in conformance with the comp plan, land use design, land use and built form designations. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any discussion or questions about any of the first five consent items here? Or would someone like to make a motion? And I believe we can take all five as a motion together. Commissioner Ford.
I move that we adopt items four through, was it seven, eight? Four through eight, as presented by the staff, adopting the staff reports.
Okay. Is there a second? Uh, hard, hold on. Commissioner Ford, we want a motion for consistency with the comprehensive plan, is that what you're?
That's what I meant to say, yes.
Great. All right, do we have a second?
Commissioner Baxley, second. Yes, thanks.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baxley.
Aye.
Caprini. Ford.
Aye.
Marwa.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schrader. Sweezy.
Aye.
Chair Olson.
Aye.
There are six ayes.
All right, those motions pass. Thank you. The next item on our consent agenda is number eight, Malcolm Yards Housing Tax Increment Financing Plan, and staff is Adrian Bachheim.
Yes, thank you. Hello. I'll just, I have a very short presentation here that I'm gonna share. Okay, um, yes, Commissioners, hello, I'm Adrian Bachheim. I'm a principal planner in CPED. Today, I'm presenting the Malcolm Yards Housing Tax Increment Financing Plan. Malcolm Yards Housing is part of Phase One of a larger development project located in Prospect Park neighborhood at the intersection of Fifth Street and Malcolm Avenue, within one block of the Green Lines Prospect Park Station on 29th Avenue. Phase one of the project includes the six-story affordable apartment building, as well as a seven-story mixed-use building with market-rate apartments and commercial space. The affordable housing building will provide 44 units of affordable housing. It was approved by the City Planning Commission on October 5th of 2020. The TIF plan establishes a new TIF district to finance the costs of the affordable housing project and includes a budget for the use of tax increment revenue generated by the new TIF district. All tax increment generated by the market rate building will be allocated to affordable housing. The market rate building will not receive any financial benefit from being located within the proposed TIF district. Staff finds that the plan is consistent with Minneapolis 2040. The future land use of the site is guided as production mixed-use, and the built form is Transit 15. Production, in production mixed-use residential uses are allowed as part of mixed-use buildings that provide production space. In the Transit 15 district, building heights should be four to 15 stories. Comprehensive plan policies support this project. Those policies include, but are not limited to, increasing the supply of housing, especially multifamily housing with higher densities near metro stations, developing affordable housing and infrastructure to create walkable districts near metro stations, and supporting innovation districts. Staff finds that the planning, or recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the Malcolm Yards Housing TIF plan. Any comments on that plan can be sent to my colleague, Jamie Redell. And that concludes my presentation, and staff is happy to take questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions or discussion, or would someone like to make a motion for consistency with the comprehensive plan?
I'll make a motion for consistency of the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was Commissioner Baxley, and I'll call on Commissioner Ford next.
I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Baxley.
Aye.
Caprini. Ford.
Aye.
Marwa.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schrader. Sweezy.
Aye.
Chair Olson.
Aye.
There are six ayes.
All right, that motion passes, and that's the end of our consent agenda. Moving on to our discussion agenda, item number one is number, well, number one on the discussion agenda is number 10, 3536 Niccollet Avenue, and staff is Andrew Friends.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Today, for your preliminary feedback, is a proposed project at 3536 Niccollet Avenue. The proposed project is a new six-story residential building, which would contain 196 units. This project site is located on Niccollet Avenue in the Lindale neighborhood. It's a large site of just over one acre, which was formerly occupied by a single-story shopping center that was destroyed during last year's unrest, along with surface parking that served that shopping center. The existing zoning of the site is C2 with the corridor six built form overlay district. Future land use here is corridor mixed-use, and the section of Niccollet is a designated goods and services corridor. The applicant team can speak more thoroughly to the design of the project, but just as an overview, they are proposing a two-level 148-stall parking garage consisting of one level underground as well as additional enclosed parking at the first floor. There'd be two access points to that garage, one curb cut on Niccollet at the south end of the building, as well as alley access to the, to the rear. That alley access point is designed such that it would only provide access to and from the south and would not allow access to and from the north in the alley. Along Niccollet, residential lobby and amenity spaces would comprise the entire frontage and screen the parking garage. Above the first floor, there would be five floors that would be C-shaped in plan, containing the residential component of the project. There would be common roof decks at the second floor, at the inside of that C, and then at the corner of the building on the sixth floor. The building would be primarily clad in brick and metal panel, with the brick largely concentrated on the front elevation and wrapping around the side elevations for the first bay of units. The center part of the elevation on Niccollet would be setback, in an attempt to kind of break up the massing on Niccollet, to make the, sort of the appearance of the width of the building a little bit more consistent with some of the larger, older buildings in the area. Based on the plans as submitted, the applications that would be needed would be a variance to increase the maximum lot area in the corridor six. That maximum lot area is 43,560 feet, which is one acre. To increase that maximum lot area to 45,556 square feet, a little bit of a unique situation here, where the existing lot exceeds the maximum lot area, so they're not combining parcels to create that larger lot or that need for variance. It's the existing lot that exceeds the, the maximum lot area. And it only slightly exceeds that maximum lot area. The variance amounts to an increase of just under 5% to the maximum lot area. And the project would, of course, also require site plan review. They would also need two administrative applications, so as proposed, there would need to be one FAR premium. And as submitted, the project would meet the standards for the enclosed parking premium. And then the project would require a minor travel demand management plan. Along with other feedback, staff is primarily interested in the commission's feedback on two components of the project. First, the residential building of this scale requires one small loading space. As currently proposed, that space would be provided unenclosed at the rear of the building adjacent to the alley. This configuration, as submitted, would require alternative compliance to the landscaping and screening standards, and wouldn't be particularly convenient to the building's elevators. Staff has some concern that this alternative compliance may not be appropriate, given the adjacent residential uses that are present to the south and the west. So we're interested in the commission's feedback on this. And then also, the other area is that, you know, the building would include a really substantial length of frontage that would consist of residential lobby and amenity space without interruption by a commercial user or walk-up unit. Staff feels that could present some challenges in providing interest at the pedestrian scale. And so we're interested in what suggestions the commission might have for this frontage to improve the pedestrian experience there, whether that's architectural elements on the building, resident amenities or public amenities in the space between the building and the sidewalk. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I believe the applicant team would like to present as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions before I move on to the applicant team? All right, I'm not seeing any, so if the applicant team would like to, go ahead.
Great. Hi, my name is Jeff Hall, and I'm one of the founders of Hall Sweeney Properties, along with my partner Sean. Sean, maybe you can wave. We're a Minneapolis developer with a combined 40 years of experience, which means we're getting old. Also with us tonight is Kaisa Huddleston, if you could wave, Kaisa, our development associate, and our excellent architects Pete Kelly and Josh Shanson, Wave Guys of Collage Architects. We were contacted by the property owners after their existing building was destroyed last year, and they wanted us to help them reimagine future use for the site. Sean and I have developed seven projects in Minneapolis over the last few years, and our focus is on neighborhood development. We're long-term owners and investors, so we really try to build quality projects. And design is a really key component for us. We want attractive buildings that work for the neighborhood and the site, because we are long-term owners. And our projects have been well-received, and we, we tend to win design awards, which makes us happy, because it means we're on the right track. Thanks again for having us tonight. I'd like to turn over now to Pete to go through the design in a little more detail.
Thanks, Jeff. I think Josh is gonna run through the plans, but just kind of want to point out a real kind of high-level thing in terms of, you know, we understand this is a large building, and we understand that there is really kind of a a change that's on Niccollet Avenue. So from one- and two-story buildings that are there now to essentially corridor six, so we believe strongly in kind of the density portion of it, and kind of creating a larger building, but we're trying to be pretty sensitive to stepping the building down on the corners for, at least in the near term, a transition to some different types of uses. And then also really trying to create a datum that's roughly about two stories, to try to tie into some of the existing buildings along Niccollet Avenue. And then the three-part, you kind of saw a three-part scheme horizontally, is to kind of take the, the building to the north and take that proportion, and then kind of start to replicate it as three individual pieces. So we're kind of in this fine line of wanting to break the building up, but trying to keep it simple and not too many materials and not too broken up. So love to hear some input on that. And then also on the ground floor, we really did, we are stepping back the middle of this, of the building to create actually a larger setback from the sidewalk. We haven't really come up with what that is yet in terms of use, but we're really trying to kind of enhance that sidewalk area. And then as far as providing active front, which Josh will go through in a minute, we do have kind of a co-working space on the northeast corner of residential amenities and, and on the rest of it, understanding that there's a fair amount there, but we're looking at breaking it up in a couple ways. One is with the spacing and the bay placement throughout. And the other is kind of the activity, actually within, between the sidewalk edge and the building edge, and then some two-story spaces. So Josh, if you want to kind of run through the plans?
Yeah, that's great. You guys did such a great job. I don't know if we need to discuss anymore, but yeah, I think from the, the onset, taking the, the building to the north, the nice housing project to the north, and replicating that depth of that building at 60 feet was kind of a first move in creating two, two knuckle pieces on the ends of the project, allowing to step back the middle portion. So right now, we, you know, we're, per the 2040, you know, we have a maximum setback of eight feet, which is shown right here. And you can see the existing building to the north actually is stepped back 20 feet. That 20 feet is reflected to the north, where, where, you know, we have some retail, well, everything is stepped back to that 20 feet, including the retail properties that are at the intersection of 35th and Niccollet. So right now, we're showing eight feet at the knuckles that anchor the project, and then looking at right now, based on our conversations with KFNA and, and, and LNA neighborhood committees, to try to activate this, this street front more and what we can do. So upon entry, you'd come into a two-story lobby space, equipped to the north with a co-working gallery space, and then on the south end, the fitness. We're still in process of working out what this lobby is going to be, but we would like to get a, a solid connection up to our green space and our green amenity that is in sort of the horseshoe of the building. So again, you know, activating these fronts, what is the nature of, you know, the space in, in front of our lobby? Do we want it to be more green and natural, or is it paved, is it, you know, how does it engage with the public realm? And looking at the depth of the, the facades and sort of the rhythms to break it up at every 25 feet to reinforce sort of that commercial corridor that I think people have responded to, that they, that they're looking for. So as you go up, the building steps back continuously in the midriff of the building to try to give prominence to these end conditions. And then as you go up, again, even further, we shave back on the sixth floor along the corners of the building. The unit mix, I don't know if we talked about that. We have 196 units that, you know, that range from 400 square feet to 850 square feet. We're still working out all the numbers there, just based on what we're going to be doing on the first floor and rounding out our amenity package. But I will show you sort of where we have started this process with the, the look of the building, and just give you sort of an in-process look at how we're looking to engage with the materials of the neighborhood, the landscape out front, differentiating the midriff of the building, how we're pushing the facade in and out to create more of an active front, as you know, and as Pete said, really trying to give emphasis on, you know, the first two levels here. The neighboring building is roughly about 38 feet in height, which puts it at about right where my hand is here. So creating this datum, that two-story, really makes the existing building, I think, fit in a little bit better with the entire scale of the building. So right now, this is, is kind of where we are with the look of the building, and, and again, we're, we're looking to round out the amenity package on the first floor and progress with the design of engaging that public realm.
Thank you for your presentation. Commissioners, questions, discussion, feedback? I'll start by saying I don't really have a problem with the loading space where it is, but I also don't think very many people use it, which is why I think it probably wouldn't be a problem, but that kind of defeats the purpose of a loading space. So I'm not really sure what other location that could go. But I just don't think it'll be used much. Commissioner Ford.
Thank you. I'm trying to find in the material from the developer, from Collage, is there a west elevation? I can't find it, maybe I'm just missing it somewhere. Okay.
Should be that on the screen. So what you're seeing is the two ends of the building and the courtyard setback is kind of grayed out in the middle. So the site actually, one of the things on the site is the north, I'm sorry, the southwest corner of the site slopes up quite a bit from the, from the north to the south. That, there's kind of a little hill at the south end.
Right. And that's where the loading dock, or loading area is?
Yeah, that would get flattened out a little bit, and part of the reason we put the loading dock there, there's kind of twofold part. One is, as we were developing the plan, and we, so we've, we've met with Alan Klugman at the city, we've met with Paul Miller, we've gotten our TDMP, Bill Smith, on board to talk about access. So we've looked at a number of different access points, and through conversation, we've got the access on the south end of the building, that that's probably the easiest to get in and out on Niccollet Avenue. The concern about the access point in and out at, at that location is that there is enough traffic here to potentially create an issue coming in or going out. So there was some desire to put an outlet, so to speak, on the south end. Now, that's a kind of a narrow alley, so what we're proposing on this, and based on kind of the overall circulation of 35th and 36th, 36, and it's the access point to, to 35W, so 35th is actually a one-way, so it, it, people going north is probably not gonna happen very often, so we're hoping that we can encourage them to go south. But if we dump too much traffic into the alley, we were concerned about- But if we dump too much traffic into the alley, we were concerned about the number of cars and people kind of short-circuiting it. So the answer to that was to actually widen the alley at that location. And so it's basically concreted off and that allows any car that's coming one way or the other along the alley to pass each other. So it's essentially a passing zone for that period of time, which ends up being about 60-some feet. And also within that would be the ability to put the loading zone. We've also found in a number of these that we do have some issues with loading buildings from the inside because of clearance heights. So some of the larger buildings have larger vehicles that are trying to load in and out and they just actually can't fit under the parking garages. So yeah, we can get the vans in, we can identify a secondary one on the inside, but height is an issue. So what somebody would do is they would pull in, they'd come down the alley, they'd pull into this location, open the back doors of a bigger vehicle, open the door and go straight to the right into the move-in, move-out elevator. So we actually do think it's fairly convenient and then that larger vehicle can then circulate back out towards the, towards the south. So that's kind of what the loading zone allows for kind of a lot of circulation on that backside for the parking ramp as well as the move-in, move-out.
One last question if I can. So looking at that west elevation, there are no nice pictures of that, just a schematic or whatever, whatever the correct name is. But what will the materials be then on that west elevation?
So this is going to be primarily masonry base along the entire north, south and west sides. And as we elevate past the first floor, it will transition into metal and hardy. So the gray that you'd see would be predominantly metal panel as far as the percentage. You're welcome.
Commissioner Baxley.
I do appreciate the sketches presented earlier as part of your investigation. So can you talk a little bit about how that's going to flesh out versus what we're seeing here? Because I think there's a lot of great development. I think initially when I opened up the big gray boxes, it was a, so nice setup for that because this is lovely and I think there's a lot here we can take from that. Yes, my first question is that, you know, we are really pushing this forward onto the street. In fact, there's not a lot of, there's a kind of a fairly generous setback on Nicollet there and this big building is now pushing itself even further into that public realm. And so I think your concerns about what that activation is and sort of articulation along the street, if we are going to play that, that bigger role in the interruption of that public realm has to be, has to be really good. And I think I would, for me, it's about a little bit of depth. The building, it's got some in-and-outs on the ground floor, but it is still pretty plainer. And I think anything you can do to create some shadow, some little sense of the building is beginning to move back out of the public realm, whether that's a more gracious canopy at entry where we can recess that center portion a little bit more. I think that sense of relief for a pedestrian and that sort of, you know, occupation of that space would be, would be welcome. And I think also really articulating the two-story quality of that center section. You know, I think playing that up and not worrying about that sort of first floor datum running through there, the sort of balance of reinforcing the two sides and the role that those proportions play in the street, that can be different. I would, I would, I would, for me, I would back off and I think that variety would actually be welcome and kind of more visual access to that two-story space would get at some of the concerns about that activation. I'm not worried about the, you know, it all being lobby. I think there could be plenty activation with that, but I think architecturally, a little more differentiation of that centerpiece, playing up that two-story would be, would be really nice. I think the, there's going to be a lot of activity on that loading corner. I mean, that is just, that's going to be pretty intense, so scheduling and staging are going to be critical for that. And just a cursory glance at some of the parking layouts in the inside, I think, you know, where we've got, trying to maximize that out where we're not having a through circulation, those end spots, pretty tough to get in and out of. I'm sure you'll look at those and I have a tough time getting into those. I'm sure everybody does, so. But anyway, I think there's, I think you're really working on breaking down the mass is there, although those big corners, I think these are much more encouraging than, than the ones in the package. So I would continue on, on that and really focus on some relief to that lower level.
Commissioner Baxley, thanks for that input. I think that's great. And one of the things I do want to point out is that we are, we actually pulled the building as far back as kind of allowed, so to speak, which is an eight-foot maximum. And so we are actually at eight-foot maximum on the two ends and then additional, additionally in the middle. So, and Andrew, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that it does fall under alternative site compliance?
Yeah, that's correct. Right. So the site plan review standards, you know, with the intent of reinforcing a street wall, you know, do encourage buildings to locate within eight feet of the front property line. So if they want to go further than eight feet back, they would need alternative compliance. That may be appropriate here. You know, this is pretty unique. I think this stretch of Nicollet is very unique, one of the only places in the entire city where we see traditional storefront commercial buildings that are set back significantly from the sidewalk. I didn't know this until Josh pointed it out when we were talking about this project, but at one point, the Nicollet right-of-way was actually wider than it is today. The physical street was never widened, but the right-of-way was widened and then vacated. And so that's why a lot of those buildings are, are set back so far. So it is, it is pretty unique in that way, how far every other building on the block is set back. So if the commission feels that it would be more appropriate for the, the whole length of the building to be set further back from Nicollet, that's certainly something that could, could be fine from, from our end too.
Yeah, I think, I don't know if I would suggest that, but I think it's certainly an opportunity to play back and forth with that line to create both activity, some relief that we're talking about, you know, maybe the, you know, the corners respect that and then it folds back. I think the, you know, the team certainly has the talent and ability to kind of pull off, I think, take advantage of this unique situation and really sort of play with those lines in a way that creates a different and wonderful kind of engagement with the street.
Thank you, Commissioner Baxley. Commissioner Marwa.
Hi, thank you. My comments are regarding the staff question number two primarily around the frontage and the pedestrian scale and kind of how, I mean, I, this is a major corridor. It's a major thoroughfare as we know. I think this building does not bring a lot of interest to the street. This, this sketch, it looks, makes it look a little bit more exciting, but the renderings you have with the gray paneling all throughout the entire ground floor, I mean, we already live in a very snowy gray environment. I think bringing a little more liveliness to it, engaging artists to do some cool, you know, FFE on the ground floor of that space, there's so many artistic elements you could be bringing to such a major thoroughfare where this is that I'm just not seeing right now. So I'd love to hear your guys' what you've done, kind of how have you engaged the community and how could you kind of bring some of that inspiration into a building like this, especially as far as the pedestrian scale is going?
Yeah, I guess I would say that's the process we're in right now. So, you know, we want to get to the committee of the whole, you know, and get input early. We want to get to the neighborhood earlier to kind of verify some of the, the other bigger, broader issues and kind of figure out the touch point, so to speak. So I would say that's the process we're at. Josh has shared some of our thinking in how we're starting to approach from what we've submitted to where we are now, so we can take some of those comments and really start developing, you know, more street life is kind of what we're hearing and that's massing, pulling in and out and maybe engaging artists. I will say that on 46th and Mini Haha, Jeff and Sean did engage with the arts community. We do have an artist coming in. We are, so we're actively kind of creating that space with community input. And so, you know, we're still trying to build that process.
Yeah. Do you mind outlining a little bit more about what that process is entailing and how is that, you know, what is the feedback you're looking for?
Sure.
To kind of change the design of that pedestrian experience?
Well, the process on Mini Haha, maybe Jeff, you can talk a little bit about what we've, you know, who we've been talking about on that one?
Is that the question about 46th and Mini Haha?
Yeah.
Well, is this going to be the same for this project?
Not necessarily, because we kind of approach each one of them differently, but so we're trying to, I mean, part of this is designing the process, so and finding who to talk to and, you know, who are the right people and how do we approach it and what's the history of the site? So on the 46th and Mini Haha, we took the idea of the history of the site and, and it being kind of from indigenous culture and we're looking at some of the, whether it's the naming or the patterns in the, in the sidewalk and we've got kind of an artistic canopy over the top of it. But all of this stuff takes quite a while to kind of develop and think through. So we haven't had that opportunity yet, so we're looking forward to doing that as well.
And what are the different communities you're planning to engage with around on this project?
I don't know that I can answer that. We're, we're kind of in that process right now of trying to figure out. We understand that, you know, more street life along this edge, great. We want to get artists involved. We want, so that's what we're working through.
Okay. It would just be great when we see him, you know, the next time we see proposals, this proposal that has a little bit more, you know, interest to it, that looks a little bit more reflective of the community where it's going to be. Thank you.
All right. Up next is Commissioner Ford.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going back to, this is not one of the issues raised by staff, but I'm going back to that west elevation of the alley, the alley side. And on the east side of Blaisdell, across the alley, is, as I recall, mostly single-family houses, some duplexes. I can't recall if there's a three-story apartment building in there or two and a half-story apartment building. I don't think so, but anyway, that, that is, so it's a bunch of folks with backyards and you're offering them a fairly, I think, oppressive bunch of, of gray metal. And I think I'm, so I guess I'm inviting you to be a little bit more responsive to the neighbors in that, on that side and perhaps be a little bit more inventive on how it might look.
Well, we can certainly took a look at, you know, maybe doing some additional things to it, but I will say it's a U-shaped building. So we did very purposefully reduce the mass and the scale that was facing the west neighbors. And we've also stepped that back on the fifth floor, so, or on the top floor to kind of reduce scale and provide some more sun angle. So we can continue to look at, you know, what that means and how that looks. So I think that's a great point, but I do want to say we, I mean, that was one of the reasons for the shape of this building.
Right. And I appreciate that, that, that does decrease the mass, but still, a lot of what you're seeing is gray metal if you live on Blaisdell. Thank you.
We have, Commissioner, for what it's worth, this is Sean Sweeney, one of the owners. I've already, we've engaged with a couple of the neighbors who live on that other side of the alley, shared some of the pictures with them and images, have had, to be frank, very, very positive feedback so far. But it's a, it's a good comment and we're, we'll certainly take that under advisement. The one thing I want to mention, we, as Jeff stated in the beginning, obviously the design of these buildings, the materials is something we spent a lot of time thinking through and working on. We try to not be the developers that bring buildings to the market that have 17 different colors on them. I think we've got enough of those out there right now. We are really minimalistic, simple, very high-quality materials. So regardless of how this back end, whatever color it is or whatever colors it is, I can assure you, it's going to look very, very, very good.
Commissioner Baxley.
I think one last comment as you develop these and, and present them. When we talk about how it stitches into the neighborhood, please make sure that the context, especially on these perspectives, if we're keying off the larger multifamily building, make sure it's in the, you know, again, I think it's, it's really important for us to see those efforts, proportions, scale in context, so that, I know you're starting early on with this, we'll get there, but both elevationally and three-dimensionally, I think that representation helps us understand the story and your efforts around what, what context means and why this building is what it is. So please include those on the next one, it'd be very helpful. Thank you.
All right. I'm not seeing any more comments from commissioners, so thank you everyone for presenting your project to us.
Thank, thank you for having us. Appreciate it.
All right. Up next is discussion item number two, which is item number 11, 26th and Bloomington, 2603 through 2621 Bloomington Avenue, and staff is Mailing Smith.
One minute here. So this project is 2603 Bloomington. Since the last time that this project came to the committee of the whole, they also added a parcel just to the south, 2621 Bloomington Avenue. So the lot area has increased from 29,230 square feet to 35,652 square feet. And this would be considered, well, sorry, so it's, it's two parcels. They have also increased some of the dwelling units from 79 to 86. And then there would be 101 underground parking stalls. The, the retail space and the other non-residential uses on the ground floor have also increased slightly from 12,000 to 17,000 square feet. Their overall building size has increased as well and the height has increased just by a little bit. The, sorry, try to slide, this is going to be moving. Not sure why this is locked up. Let me try this other thing. Okay. Hey, I'll just keep talking, I guess, until maybe it decides to unfreeze or something. So this project has eliminated variances since the last time we were at the committee of the whole. Okay, there you go. Oh, I know why, sorry. Okay, here you go. So they used to have a number of variances for setbacks and also to increase the floor area ratio. Now with the increased lot size, they have been able to eliminate those variances. So the only applications that are required for the planning commission hearing are site plan review and the PUD. There's also the administrative height increase and that's all laid out in the staff report or in the COW memo. So as you can see, there is no longer at-grade parking off of the alley. It's a drop-off area, drop-off pickup area that would serve the adult daycare and the childcare center, possibly the other commercial uses, but then there's also a way to get down into the But then there's also a way to get down into the underground parking. Staff is concerned about the size of this drop off area and whether it would be used for parking, actually. And it, and it does get counted in the overall gross floor area of the building now under the zoning code. So that does contribute to the height of the building too, the height and bulk of the building. The upper floors, you can see they step back away from the, the frontage along Bloomington. But the massing is concentrated on the east side of the property, which is closer to interior three. So we do have some questions and concerns about that, as you'll see later. This image provided by the applicant shows you how the height of they're requesting an increase in height from 56 feet to 84 feet. And that can be approved administratively if they qualify for some requested premiums as well as meet the required findings. Here's some elevations, the north and south. You can see the, the building mass concentrated along the east. And then here's a view from the alley and here's the view from Bloomington. You can see the C shaped building. And this is an image provided by the applicant showing, and the FAR city. So without applying for any premiums, they'd be allowed 2.4 in corridor four. They'd be allowed up to 3.6 with premiums. And they're proposing 3.59. And this kind of lays out the amenities that they're either formally going to apply for if they submit a land use application and also premiums. But they also have listed some other features of the building as well. This was, I think this was included in your COW packets. So I'll just get into the feedback that we are looking for. So as I mentioned, we are concerned about the overall height, bulk and length of, length of the building, all of which have increased since the last submission. And that was a concern of the, the committee last time as well. We are wondering how the commission feels about the question, whether the PUD amenities that they're proposing, which are active liner uses, that's probably not being applied for anymore. So I'll just skip that one. But underground parking and then the outdoor children's play, play area, do those amenities or does anything else about the building do enough to address the request to increase the maximum size of an individual building above 89,600 square feet? They're exceeding that by almost 40,000 square feet. Is the height increase request from quarter six stories a reasonable means for further achieving comprehensive plan goals? And then we were just trying to brainstorm some ideas. Would there be more interest in this type of proposal if they distributed the massing a little bit differently? If a five, or maybe if they lowered it to five stories just to help bring down the scale a little bit and make it more in conformance with the quarter four guidance? Because right now it's reading more like a quarter or six building. And then, as I mentioned, we have some issues with the ground floor at grade drop off area. And then this image shows you the built form districts that apply to this area and the site. So along Bloomington, you see corridor four mostly. And then to the east is interior three with a lot of low density residential uses. And just wanted to point out, we haven't received a travel demand management plan from the applicant yet. So they would have to also apply for a minimum of four points and, and show compliance before they even submit the land use application. We don't need feedback on that, but that's just something we're noting. And with that, I will conclude and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions right now before we move on to the applicants? All right, if anyone from the applicant team is here, you can go ahead.
I am. Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, super. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Todd Smith. And I'm master development, master properties. And we're developing on behalf of Kadra Youssef, who's the property owner, lives and works in the neighborhood and plans to live in the new project. The goal is to build a family friendly, mixed use, multifamily business. It's designed for residents of the neighborhood, looking for housing options. Can you give me one second? I've got to echo.
Oh, sorry, that's my fault. I'll mute.
Hey, Todd. Can you turn that down? Sorry about that, guys.
Todd, do you let me know when you want me to share the screen?
You can put up page 10 now, that's fine. It's designed for residents of the neighborhood looking for housing options. It's not subsidized, although approximately 25 for the, 25% of the units qualify as affordable at 60% AMI. 64% of the units are three and four bedrooms. An additional 19% are two bedrooms. So it's taken us a while to get back to COW. We were last here in June, but we listened to all of your input and have significantly changed the design of the building. We've gone back and revisited and studied the 2040 plan. As Mailing said, what we're showing today has no setback variance, conforms to FAR and with allowed premiums achieves permit, permitted height. And also, as Mailing mentioned, we expanded the site and purchased the property of the south. Team's pretty proud of where we're at and hope for your support. This has been an enjoyable but very challenging project. It's widely recognized that we need more three, four bedroom units and the market doesn't ever deliver them. And the reason is it's really, really hard. So looking at the 2040 plan and the goals and policies, there's 13 goals and this project directly impacts eight of them. There are 100 policies and this building responds in a positive way to 33 of them. Briefly, it eliminated disparities, more residents and jobs. The first floor commercial space has existing businesses that collectively have 37 jobs, most of them neighborhood residents. Affordable housing I've addressed and Ellie will further in talking about modular construction. Living wage jobs, the average job in this building is $18.50, which is significantly higher than that neighborhood. Health, safe and connected people is a really great goal and it's very long, but I encourage people to read it. This project is community inclusive by nature. Childcare, adult daycare, multi generational housing, a communal kitchen, secure playground facilities, a community room, high quality physical environment, complete neighborhoods. This building is, the sidewalks are twice the requirement. It's bike friendly, it's on public transit. A bus shelter is designed into the facade. Bicycle storage is twice what it's required. And climate change resilience. In responding to staff requests for feedback, I'd like to address a couple of things Mailing just spoke to. Do the PUD amenities justify the increase in size? In looking at the goals of 2040, it does. And Ellie, if you will switch to page 15, please. Listed are not only required premiums and amenities, but also other things that this building just happens to incorporate. Not that we're keeping score, but it just addresses so many of the goals of the 2040 plan. In listening to your feedback and listening to it again on, on tape, the look of the building has significantly changed in the feel from whether at a pedestrian experience or across the street. Stepping back to the upper stories, we hope you will look at as a, as a considerable change in design. The second point for feedback was the drop off area and staff's concerns that it's used for parking. And we previously showed it as used for parking. The underground parking more than, is more than sufficient for the needs of the restaurant, of the residents at 100 stalls. We want to provide a, a safe drop off and pickup for the daycares. On the third point that staff is concerned with the height, doesn't respond to the change in built form districts with the, the eastern side of the building. The built form four language includes provisions, which when successfully met, allow for an increase in height. This building meets and exceeds those provisions in the built form four language of the 2040 plan. And now I'd like to turn it over to the architect for our team, Ellie.
Hi, thank you, Todd. Thank you, commissioners. Thanks, Mailing, for presenting our project. With everything that Todd was mentioning on their side and, and our really mutual attempt to, to really listen to what was said in the first version and the, and the first time that we came in from COW, I want to talk more about the architectural side. Because I think really Todd and Mailing, we're, we're talking about all the PUD premiums, the PUD points that we're going to give and the premiums that we're going to comply with. But I really want to show the commissioners that we really did everything that we can to allow this building to happen. Because it does, it does need to make sense from all aspects, from the development side, from the neighborhood side, from the city side, from the built form side. And at the same time, we wanted to really address your comments. So with master properties purchasing the other, the, the site to the south, yes, we did increase the lot area. But percentage wise, we reduced from 91% lot coverage to 85% because we reduced the, the, how much the footprint of the building on, on the total property line that we have. So even though the building is slightly longer, we are, our footprint is 85% now versus 91 before. When it comes to the FAR, variance eliminated. When it comes to the setbacks, variance eliminated. But not only that, I'll try to zoom in here to show that we are now well in the setbacks and way more than what we are required by the code, measuring from the center line of, of the alley and then from the property line, we are altogether more than 20 feet away on our first level. On, on, sorry, 18 feet from the center of the alley to the first level and more than 20 feet to the portion that is six story. We pushed and pulled because DJR has been working with Rise Modular and we are becoming some kind of expert on the modular. We are, we know that we can push and pull these mods just to create, you know, a little bit of more back and forth on the east facade. And one more point that I want to make is that, that east, east facing facade, even though the site got longer and the building got longer on the lower portion of it, the six story portion of it did not. And that's due to us pulling back on the north side of it and 23 feet away from whatever is already way more than what we are required by code. So altogether, almost 40 feet away from the property line on the six story part of it. That being said, we are, and obviously what we're trying to show here is that we're 42 feet away from a property line from the west facing facade. And just to conclude that point, here's the property line. Our four story portion of the buildings, we could go 11 feet. We are over 15 feet. The six story, we should be 15 feet. We are more than 40 feet away. So we really, really, really try to li- listen to what you guys were asking about the bulk of the building and the size of the building. But we need to make it happen. We need, we need to make the numbers come in and, and. So with everything that we were listening to what COW was asking us to do, I, I, I think that if I turn to this image to show how we are trying to fit into the neighborhood as much as we can. So right now, on the north facing facade, we are more of a four story look with a sit back, with a pullback of the building. On, on the south facing facade, we are again 23 feet away from the south facing facade, from the south property line. We, we stepped back quite a bit. So just to, to minimize that, we, we heard some of the things that you guys were mentioning that, that you liked in the first version and that the design that we proposed with the material that we proposed, you guys were asking to see a little bit more greenery here. We said it's, it's a little bit early, but we can, we can absolutely, you know, dress up our, our renderings for now. The materi- the use of the materials and the overall design, that's a little bit challenging when we, when we start doing the setbacks. But we are now at the point that we're, we're pretty confident and pretty proud that we are bringing this product to a very, very needing neighborhood and a product that is very, very unique to the city. I will reiterate what I was mentioning in the first round of COW. This is not 150, 180 micro units. This is a 80, 85, 86 units for families. Three bedrooms, four bedrooms, which is enormously and greatly needed, especially for that, for that community. So I think that the overall concern of staff for that building being too big for, for its context, I think that we have tried and pulled every rabbit that we could have had in the hat. And master properties went and allowed this to happen by purchasing that other site. We kept the, the C shape and really back, back it up. And the reason that it's, it's almost on, on the east facade is because we want to break the building and make it look as much as possible as if it's not one big mass. And in the package, we tried to show that there is a very, very nice rendering from the street view that as you are, from eye level, I mean, that as you're walking in the street, this building looks really way less bulky and intimidating. I'm trying to use the phrase that some of you used before. And way, way more fit into the neighborhood. And the one last slide that I want to point out is the shadow study that is in your package and shows that really minimal impact to the houses on, on the east side of that block. And with that, I am going to thank you and would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Commissioners, any comments, questions, discussion?
Good, let's build it.
I know there are some. Commissioner Meyer.
I was okay with the preview, previous iteration of the project. And, you know, I, I, I think the changes that have been made are, are fine. Responding to the feedback requests that staff have made. So the first one for 1A. You know, I, I think that they've expanded the lot size in order to reduce their need for other You know, I, I think that they've expanded the lot size in order to reduce their need for other variances. So I think that you know, that it makes sense to provide for the larger lot size areas, like they can do those things. Is the height increase request from four to six stories a reasonable means for further achieving comprehensive plan goals? I think it clearly does. You know, this provides family-oriented housing immediately above a daycare. I think that is one of the key things that we were pushing forward with the 2040 Plan and that, you know, that's the type of thing that these premiums are designed to accomplish. So I feel it, it does that. As far as the, the distribution of the massing, I don't have a particular opinion about it. Don't have much of opinion on, on the drop-off. I would defer to staff about that. Yeah, for the, for the administrative height findings, I mean, I, I think that, you know, that they're justified as, as furthering the comp plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer. Commissioner Baxley.
Thank you, Commissioner. I echo Commissioner Meyer's comments. I think for me, what's really helpful is page 14 of the submittal. I think the ability to articulate compliance and then showing how manipulating that mass and compliance still achieves FAR in a creative way. And I think it's a really unique solution in terms of providing a protective play area by putting it up on the second floor, which, you know, will be interesting to see how we solve the kids getting up and down, but I'm sure we can do that in a safe way. But it's, it's got great eyes on it, overlooks the street. It's a, it's a, it's a really, I think, wonderful way to really cremate a, a, a community hub there. So I do commend the developer and the team for doing that. And I think this is just interesting in terms of the discussion we just had on the previous project, which is these issues of larger buildings and the sort of C orientation, right? The one previous talked about opening up the courtyard to the neighborhood and this one takes a different position for, for good reason. So I think we, you know, those alley conditions, whether it's, you know, a vertical wall with subtle setbacks or a hole or a canyon like the previous project had are things that we, you know, we wrestle with when we're talking about zones of the city that are but adjacent zones that are much smaller structures. So for me, I think the, the trade-off of that what I, I think will be a wonderful upper-level active space, a streetscape that provides lots of options and the sort of knuckle articulation of the building totally justifies the, the height issues. I would comment though, too, on some of these views that I, I think you're, you're maybe not even kind of really, because I don't think that's an eye-view shot. That appears to me to be elevated up a little bit. And so I think if you're actually down in the street, especially at the corners and knuckles, that upper two floors are going to recess even a bit more because they're much more present because I think you're up almost appears to be about 15 or 20 feet in the air from the shot. So I would look at those and that would also help your, your case, I believe.
Thank you for your comment.
We'll go to Commissioner Marwa.
Hi. Yes, I remember this proposal for when we saw it last time you came through Committee of the Whole. And I do really like this building. I think having the complete, you know, active uses on the ground floor will help make that, you know, feel active and will be constantly, you know, something on that ground floor. It's not just blank wall throughout it. So I don't really have as much of a problem with that. And I also want to commend you for the active uses on the second floor with that courtyard. That's not something I've seen besides amenity decks and besides, you know, kind of just for the residents, actually having that be a useful space for the daycare and bringing people into the building. I think that's a very innovative use for this. And so I just want to compliment you guys for doing something different with this. And I like the color changes in this project as well. I know we had talked about that at the last meeting, so I appreciate you taking that feedback into consideration. That's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Swayze.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. For me, a little bit more of a minority point of view on this. I do appreciate the changes. I remember having significant concerns about the, the placement of the play area and a commingled use with the residents and that appears to have been, been resolved. I share staff's concerns about that drop-off space. I definitely, I'm a fan of drop-off spaces. I tend to advocate for them, particularly when we anticipate these kind of buildings going in. I'm not sure that giant space is needed for that. And, you know, there's no guarantee that these things stay in adult daycare or daycare forever. And, you know, we, we, I think ideally it would be built with a more flexible or useful use of some of that space because I, I don't know that, that that whole space would be needed if those building, if those uses stay in the building. I do have a concern about size. I mean, on the picture that we can see there on the screen, if you look way over to the left, you see a little tiny house over there. And I'm not sure that we have the perspectives that I would like to see in order to justify the overage in proportion of the size for the things that are required for the PUD that almost 40,000 feet as Mei Ling put out there. I still happen to think it's too big that may, for the space. I mean, you look at that, wow. And for me, you know, again, it, it appears to be much more corridor six development in a corridor four space next right on top of interior three and everything has to abut something, you know, I, I get that. But this to me doesn't feel transitional from interior three at all. This is, you know, I, I don't, I don't have any problem with the way it looks or what it's designed to do, but I still have many of the concerns that I had that the last time we saw it, which doesn't mean it's a bad project. For me, it's too big for this space. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Swayze. I'm not seeing any more comments, so I hope that you've received the feedback that you need and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving on to item number 12. 3112 and 1/2 West 28th Street and staff is Mei Ling Smith.
Hi. Hi again. Okay, so this project, as Commissioner Olson mentioned, is 3112 and 1/2 West 28th Street. And this is the exact, oh, wait, I didn't, I'm sorry, guys, I'm having issues tonight. Didn't share my screen. Here we go. There we go. So it is just southeast of Cedar Lake here, and it does not have street frontage. So 28th Street is the, the nearest public street, but it's about, you know, it's one parcel in and it's along the public alley. And then the Kennelworth Trail runs along the west side. It's an irregularly shaped parcel, as you can see, it's a triangle, is a triangle. And it is located in the R5 zoning district with interior one as the built form district and guidance. It's also neighborhood mixed use and the, this designation was applied to the site with the intent of kind of allowing some of these non-residential uses to transition or retain their existing non-residential form. But it is an interesting mix of policies. The applicant, oh, and sorry, here's some more images. This is the view from 28th Street. You can see the industrial building in the front. And right now on the site, there's an industrial storage building. And here's a view from Kennelworth Trail, it's raised up slightly. And then, so this would be the, the north on this side. The applicant is proposing nine dwelling units in a two-story building. You can see that here is where the alley is. There would be parking spaces located off of the alley. There would be one kind of sub-level garden level unit on the south side and then three building sections for the rest of the units. So this is one and two stories. Here are some section drawings provided by the applicant. So since the publication of the Committee of the Whole memo, staff asked the applicant to provide additional section drawings to show where the garden level unit is in terms of the grade. And so you can see that image right here. Here's some renderings showing, and this is the view from the alley. This is like a cantilevered unit above the parking area. So the feedback that we're requesting today is, so first of all, the applicant is requiring a number of variances first to develop a lot without street frontage. I just want to note that the fire department has been engaged from the beginning of our talks with the applicant and it would continue to receive service, so they don't see an issue with fire department access. The applicant is requesting a setback variance to allow parking in the interior side yard. There is also an application to reduce the maneuvering area along the alley for one of, from some, for some of the parking spaces. But the one that we have the concern about is to increase the floor area ratio from 0.5 to 0.7 because of this unusual mix of policies. So nine units is allowed by right under the R5, R5-based zoning. We are wondering how the Commission feels about increasing the floor area ratio, given that it had interior one as the future land use. And in the comp plan, the maximum that is suggested under interior one is three units. So we're wondering, you know, even though the nine-unit building is allowed by right, is an increase in bulk going to be approvable? And then we have concerns that the applicant could probably address a different way, that the semi-basement would not comply with some of the new regulations related to bicycle storage, that you can't have all of it like located in a basement. There has to be more at-grade access. Hopefully this is something the applicant could just fix with future iterations, maybe providing an outdoor bike area, bike storage shed or something like that. So I think the main issue that we wanted to get feedback on tonight is just the floor area ratio. Obviously, this is a very unusual site. It has different constraints than a normal site. So I think I'll end there. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Marwa has a question.
Hey, just a comment. I don't think the bike parking issue, I feel like the developer is going to make sure that bike parking trail, so it would kind of be a new brainer that they would make sure there's a secure space for bikes once the final finished products together. I don't see us needing to kind of exactly say where that needs to to trail. I'm sure they will include it or they'd be silly not to. And I also just love this project. I think this is a super cool use on what were, you know, some crappy buildings ahead of time. So I just want to, you know, more of this, how to, how to get more of this kind of interest in when we're seeing these kind of new developments come up that are a little denser. I think these are really, really cool use of that and should be an example that we show around. So those are my comments. I'm sorry, I do have to run. I have a very angry So.
All right. Thank you.
But thank you so much, Mei Ling.
Thank you.
I believe we still have four Commissioners. Is that correct? I see. Just to make sure we still have quorum.
I'm here. Ford's here.
Ford. Baxley.
Swayze.
Swayze is still here. Okay, we're, we're good. We only need three.
You, you can't see me or hear me?
Oh, now I can. Okay. Is there someone from the applicant team who would like to present about this project?
Yes, Humberto Caballero. Well, thank you Commissioners for having us here. Our intention is to, you know, provide a creative solution for a difficult site. At the same time, we, we wanted to somehow relate this building to the train tracks with rhythm and character. And since it was a very difficult site, we also considered the context, keeping proportion, scale and rhythm. So we believe that it's very creative, it's very unique and, you know, we're very excited to, to present to you and get your feedback. And thank you, Mei Ling, for all your help and thank you for having us here.
All right, Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Meyer.
So I agree, excuse me, with Commissioner Marwa that this is a really cool building. You don't see many like this and I, I think adds some cool diversity. So I'm, I'm pleased with the design. As to the FAR question, which staff says is, is the main one that they would like addressed. If I'm not mistaken, like the original version of the built form that the planning commission voted for, would have allowed this by right, I think. But then the, the council subsequently reduced the FAR a little bit, but you know, I, I think it's a modest increase and I think it's fine. And I think it's justified in this case by the unique zoning situation that it's in. So I would support that. Thank you.
Commissioner Baxley.
Yeah, I think to kind of pile on here a little bit, I think, you know, unusual and extraordinary sites sort of demand unusual and extraordinary solutions. I, I think in this case, the articulation of, you know, the FAR increase is really based on a module that's grounded in the kind of fabric of the neighborhood. And so I, I think a really creative way to get something that has presence that sort of deserves this site in a way is, is, is really wonderful. We should support, you know, sort of envision all these extraordinary weird sites around the city. If they had this sort of attention and care, it just makes all our neighborhoods better. So I really appreciate the effort, the thought. And I think for me, those exceptions and concerns, while there are really not warranted, I think this is a really terrific project. Thank you.
Commissioner Ford.
Yeah, I will just very briefly add my agreement with everything said so far. This is a really tough site and a really interesting solution. And when you're finished here, there are many more sites around Minneapolis you can go work on. But, but bravo, good job.
I'm not seeing any more comments, but I'll just say I agree. I didn't, I was concerned about fire access, but it sounds like that is not a problem and what a cool and seemingly appropriate use for a site like this. So thank you to the applicant for presenting. Hope we answered your questions.
Yes, Judith, and thank you so much again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've got one more item. And it's item number 13, Housekeeping Zoning Code Text Amendment. And staff is Jason and Janelle.
Thank you, Commissioners. Janelle and I are working on a zoning code text amendment that we informally refer to as the Housekeeping Amendment. It will correct zoning code citations and inconsistencies, clarify vague or confusing provisions throughout the ordinance, a variety of correction of errors essentially, or, or fixing what we understand to be the intent in some cases. I don't anticipate that, that Commissioners will have a lot of feedback and I don't have slides for you tonight, but as is customary, we at least wanted to give you a heads up to let you know that this amendment is coming to, to one of your public hearings soon. Much of the amendment simply does fix typographical Much of the amendment simply does fix typographical errors and things that are incorrect cross references. There are some sections where the change is literally a word, like changing a plural word to a singular word, things like that. So those are the types of things that we're trying to identify and correct throughout the ordinance. Some have been on our radar for quite a while, but just haven't really necessitated an urgent correction. While we try to correct these things over time, the last thing that we, the last time we brought forward a really big kind of housekeeping amendment like this was in 2013. So we must have done a fairly good job at that point. But it's time again to fix some of these things. I guess a bit of a rule of thumb that we're trying to stick to is that we don't want to make changes that actually alter the way we regulate something as part of this. That should be a separate, more substantive discussion. There might be a few places where we enter a little bit of gray area where we're fixing something that we understand to be consistent with the intent of the ordinance. If you look at the bullet points that are on your, at the very bottom of page one and much of page two, we've included very brief descriptions of some things that are more than just typographical errors. And in our very brief descriptions, some of those might seem like they sound kind of substantive. But I think that's just a reflection of our perhaps too brief descriptions. Just one example, there's a bullet point that says, add a fourth height increase finding to the Shoreland Overlay District. Well, that sounds like a significant change, right? But when the planning commission amended the built form ordinance, it added an additional finding to the height increase analysis, which is fine. But, and that dealt with the consistency of materials on all sides when considering a height increase. But it didn't occur to us at the time that the height increases findings are also listed in the Shoreland Overlay District in a different location. So again, we're, the Shoreland Overlay District at the moment now has one less finding than height increase analyses that take place in other parts of the city. Pretty sure that wasn't the commission's intent. So that's an example of something that's a little bit more substantive, but we think falls within the realm of housekeeping. We're hoping to bring this to a public hearing on, in about a month, on October 18th. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions from commissioners.
It sounds like very detail oriented work.
Indeed.
Yeah. Commissioners, any comments or questions? Sounds like maybe no feedback is good feedback.
All right, we'll see you all with this on October 18th.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any staff updates for this evening?
There are no staff updates this evening, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we have completed all the items on our agenda for this meeting, unless someone has any objection. I will declare this meeting adjourned. Our next Committee of the Whole meeting will be Thursday, October 7, 2021. And our next Planning Commission meeting will be Monday, October 4. Have a good evening.
Hey, Alyssa, a quick question. Kim had mentioned at our meeting on Monday, this other committee that was reviewing the materials selection and had sort of a different, what was the name of that? I'm sorry, I didn't catch the.
Yes, it was the biz committee of the city council. So the formation of committees has changed under COVID and the remote meeting structure. Previously, all land use applications or other items that came before the commission would go to the zoning and planning in order to consolidate council committees during remote meetings. It is the Business Inspections, Housing and Zoning Committee, BIHZ. So that is now the council committee chaired by council member that all of our items get forwarded to before going to full council.
So who's on this biz committee? Who is them?
It is, and I think I'm going to get this right on the first, council members Goodman, Gordon, Schrader, Osman, Ellis and Reich.
Okay.
Did I do it?
I don't know. That sounds.
I see Ken needed to correct me, but I don't hear any corrections. So it is six council members. That committee meets on Tuesdays at 1:30 every other Tuesday typically. And you can find that calendar in the city's LIM system.
And there, and so items and things are brought to it just as they are to us, for example, or? Okay.
Yes, so legislative items that require a council decision, like rezonings, right of way vacations. Are those our only ones? It's been, there's a lot of kids going outside. Those are automatically forwarded to council. And then any appeals that come out of this commission also go to council for a second public hearing on the appeal.
Got it, got it. Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Otherwise, all of the quasi judicial applications that come before this committee, the decision is final at Planning Commission upon expiration of the 10 day appeal period. If those applications are appealed, so those are conditional use permits, variances, site plan review, nonconforming use applications, basically anything other than a vacation, a street renaming or a rezoning. Those would be final at the Planning Commission unless they're appealed. And then appeals go forward to council, starting at the biz committee and then going to the full city council. So I try to give updates when we get appeals. I'm probably not entirely consistent about that, but I do try to keep you informed about when those appeals are happening and what the outcome is at city council.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you very much, Kim, very helpful, thanks.
I just want to make a quick comment. Could somebody from IT please get in touch with me? I'm having some issues with my laptop and I have been able to access the Cal meetings on my phone. And for whatever reason, I don't know why, unless the format has changed and I can no longer do that, I wasn't able to. And it's, I'm just really frustrated. So if I could get some support, I'd appreciate it, okay?
Sure.
Thanks, good night.